This is for the budget. Presentation, Mark, take it away.
Good evening, everybody. It is my pleasure to present the proposed 2023 Springsberry Township budget. During the presentation, I will review the budget process, how we got to this point. Review the performance so far of the 2022 budget. Review our administrative objectives. Review the 2023 budget totals, which includes a summary of the revenues, summary of the expenses. There we slide on the 2023 personnel. We will get into a abbreviated version of the sewer fund. And touch on some unforeseen, possible unforeseen events. Budget process, the budget process is a long process, as you can see by the bar. We start in July, the directors get all of their capital improvements planning together. In August, we move to begin the preliminary budget planning. That morphs into September where all the department directors meet with me, the township manager. To go over every buying item in their budget. In October, we finalize the capital improvements plan. And begin our public budget work sessions with the board. That moves us into tonight, November. Where I present the budget to the public and to the board supervisors. And then we'll move into December where we hopefully have a approved budget by the board. 2022, to this point. As you can see, we're gonna have a modest surplus. This year. Revenues, most of the revenues either met our budget expectations or exceeded our budget expectations. Um, we did receive the second of two. American Rescue Plan funding, we did receive that, so we are fully. We have both deposits for the American Rescue. Um, grant funding, we were very successful on grant funding this year. I'll touch on that a little bit. In greater detail a little later in the presentation. Expenditures, we do have some budget changes. Expenditure increases were due to some inflation. Materials and supplies obviously went up in certain areas. Fuel cost was one of those in public works. Recreation, we do have more expenditures this year than we did in 2021. And that's due to, we added some events. Mainly in our summer concert series. MS4 project, we did complete the MS4 West Trigatory project. Capital improvements, building construction. Do have some change orders to that project. And late 2021, we did the debt refinancing. Administrative objectives. Our goal is always to provide the highest quality of service to the township business community and our resident. Residents at the lowest cost possible. Our financial values is to diversify and improve our revenues. Cost effective management of expenditure. Our financial strategy is to build an annual budget based on the current tax rate fee schedule. Continued pursuit grant funding is certainly one of our main objectives. And our objectives is to maintain quality of service, balance of revenue and expenditures, and to build our fund reserves. This slide shows a snapshot of all of our funds. The general fund is 18.9 million. Liquid fuels fund is 810,939 dollars, which is up a little bit from the previous year with this current year. Subdivision Recreation Fund, 91,450 dollars. Cetition Streetlight Fund remains the same at 96,500. Capital Improvements Fund, 8.7 million. Stormwater, water quality, which is the MS4, 1.3 million. Sewer Fund is just a little over 12 million, and all other funds at 3500 dollars. 2023 General Fund Operating Fund. As you can see, we have a balanced budget at 18 million, 901,751 dollars. This is done with no tax municipal real estate tax increases. Our revenues are always done with a conservative approach. The expenses are increased but stable. Couple key points to just to point out is our major capital improvements projects. In 2023, which will be the finalization of the Township Building Police Station and start and completion of Davis Drive. Another note is the gaming revenue that we do receive. As you all are aware, we restricted to our capital, to fund our capital improvements. This slide shows a summary of the revenue. Revenue again at 18 million, 901,751 dollars. It's important to note that the majority of our revenue, 71% of our revenue comes from. Our taxes, our real estate taxes are remain the same at 1.7 mils. Our other taxes, which is the line share. Our the pivot business privilege tax, the mercantile tax, earned in the earned income tax. And a few other taxes. Expenditures. 18 million, 901,751 dollars. Fifty-three percent of that is towards our public safety, which is comprised of police and fire services. Personnel, staffing, we still, we remain. A very strong employee base. With 94 full-time positions, we do have a few vacancies. But we, we certainly have a strong staffing in all of our departments. Sewer Fund Budget. The sewer fund budget is proposed at 12 million, 15,447 dollars. This budget includes a proposed rate increase for 2023. Our current sewer rate is 70 dollars per quarter for residential. 75 dollars per quarter for business. This budget includes a 5 dollar increase per quarter. For each of those, so residential will go to 75 dollars. Business will go to, or commercial will go to 80 dollars. Some of our expenses did increase. Chemicals, utilities, maintenance and repair. Wastewater Treatment Plant has seen the effects of that inflation. As I mentioned earlier, grant funding, we were, have been very successful with grant funding recently. I'm not going to go down through all of those grants. But what I really want to touch on is that top number in red. 7.8 million dollars in grant funding is significant. Other sources of funding, the American Rescue Plan money at the very bottom, 2.8 million dollars. That is sitting there, and we'll have a plan to spend that in the future before the expiration date, 1.6. Potential variables that can change, most of these, if not all of these are out of our control. But as we touched on, maintenance and repair, stormwater infrastructure, unfunded mandates. Catastrophic event, all of those certainly would impact what happens to our budget. Hopefully none of those things happen. That is presentation, I'll open it up to any questions.
Mark, I guess I got one technical question on the other taxes budget line item, 9.675 million. We expect that to be a reasonably conservative number in the face of a potential economic recession during the year.
I do.
Sounds like you guys are getting married.
Comment, welcome. I'm absolutely amazed at how well you've done in getting grant money for the township. And saving the residents from having those expenses, the whole staff, please be compassionate.
Abby does a lot of work, so do the directors of working with her. And I have to mention, our state representative cer- certainly helped.
Sure.
Mark, does this budget reflect changes that came out of last night's Yalfer Verathon meeting?
It does. The chief emailed me earlier this morning, said there was some change. And I forward to. Incorporated that in the slide. The overall number did not change. But the line item for the Yalfer did change. And the reason the overall number didn't change, one of the factors is since our earlier meeting with the board. When we presented the budget, there was some actual numbers that came to us for workers' compensation. So we were able to incorporate those true numbers in, so that's why I've balanced that one's the same.
Charles, should we take a minute and update the rest of the board on what we're speaking of as far as the changes?
Yeah, go ahead, Eric George.
So last night's Yalfer meeting, it was discussion on the budget. And I'll try and shorten this as much as I can, essentially I made a motion. Based on our previous conversation to amend the budget that Yalfer prepared. To remove all costs related to the safer grant items. As well as remove all costs related to a pension benefit. Uh, the obstructionist on Yalfer noted that motion down. So they were prepared to, I guess essentially say. We dare you to reject the budget.
Again.
Again. Now, unfortunately, Walt Tilly, who was the acting solicitor last night. Was there, who I think did a great job of talking to those individuals. And find a common ground to move forward so that we didn't. And after much conversation, what came out of that and what's reflected this budget. Is the monies, all the monies for the safer hires have been removed. From the budget. But the pension change as presented is still in. The actions that will be taken from here, based on that is, Yalfer will, and I should back up for a second. The reason I proposed the safer grant change. Was that in the original presentation we received on that, we were told that the safer grant. Would cover 100% of the cost of three hires for three years. At last night's meeting, there was a consultant there who presented the staffing study results. When he was talking about funding sources, he mentioned safer grant. And said that safer grant, each year the amount that gets paid through the grant goes down, so we had a conflict. And I'm trying to figure out why the conflict. And I think the conclusion we came to was that apparently the safer grant terms can change your. So what's in place currently is if you apply this year and got the grant this year, it would be 100%. But there's no guarantee if you apply next year. That's what, so given that uncertainty, that's why I proposed the change. Let's go ahead and apply for the safer grant for next year. See what does get approved, and then if we need to move forward, and for this in fact covered 100%. Then we've kind of met the original objective. The other part of the conversation was that the expectation is that. These grants, the way the process works and how slow it is, it will all more than likely be a 2024 hiring event anyway. So the time you get the grant to you actually. Advertise higher additional staff, so that, point being that the 2024 budget then at that time. Would be presented in a way to reflect the higher and the additional cost. Which are generally training and equipment that's not covered by the safer. So there are some nominal costs, I think it was about 20,000 dollars or something. So we have that. So that's the operational plan for that, as far as the pension. As I mentioned, that was not changed, so as of right now, the Yalfer budget includes changing the pension plan for, as originally presented. And the action that the Yalfer Board proposes taking at this point is to form a personnel committee to. To make sure that makes sense. So that's, Charles, I don't know if you have anything to add or find missing anything. That's kind of where we're at right now in terms of what's reflected in the budget coming out. Safer Grant Funds are out. Pension plan changes are in.
Yeah, a couple of points I would add is that I do compliment the chief who proposed early on in the meeting, the very solution to budget to avoid. Budgetary issues. Kind to what we had last year, so he did have a proposal to take out the expenditure for turnout here for the. New hires that were funded by the safer grant, as well as adjusting pension payments as, as we had expressed in our concerns last week in going into it. That's not exactly what came out. We did learn a little bit more about the cash balance plan. It isn't purely a defined benefit plan as we have here. But there is a mechanism here to look at expanding that cash balance plan through this personnel. So George is right there. The other point that I would make is that. We certainly made points as part of our debate on George's motion that. It's not the Springsberrys opposed to the safer grant. Challenges, you're kind of like in a chicken and egg situation. We don't want to commit to a budget to hire somebody without a safer grant. But in order to get the safer grant, you almost have to go through the whole year cycle. Get the award whether you got it or not, and then race to get it into the budget for the next year, and so it's problematic. The commission this year, in my opinion, decided to delay any decision on pursuing a safer grant. Until late in the year and decided to have this study, which came out late, we got the study results last night, so. And you know, puts the chief kind of a little bit into a bind in that respect because of the way our budget mechanism works as well. But we, for me, and George can chime in, I do support the effort to get the safer grant funding and see what we can do with it.
Yeah, the other thing I would add that I think helped me gain some perspective on the cash balance pension. Whereas we do not have that type of plan in Springsberry, Manchester Township, which has two representatives on the Yalfer Board. They do have a cash balance plan that they use for every, for their administrative staff as well, so. Rather than whatever a traditional 401A plan is, I think we have for our administrative staff, they use a cash balance for their. So it took a little extraction work on my part, but I got to understand that's more Manchester traditions. We've had this for some time, it works fine. Talk about the contribution grants, we didn't really get into that level last night, so. What they contribute for administrative staffers is what the Yalfer proposed. At least I gained appreciation for the Manchester Township's, as to their knowledge and understanding of the cash balance plan, how they.
Yeah, George, just to extend on that a little bit. I was, I, listening to that discussion, I was. Not convinced that the plan that we might end up with the Yalfer would be anything like the one that Manchester has. I mean, I know they have the same name. But it, there just seemed to be a lot of flexibility in actually how you build and administer those plans. But I admit, I don't understand them at all.
And I honestly can't sit here tonight and say that I know that they are in fact exactly identical.
So if we approve. The budget. We have a group of people that will work on what that looks like.
There is a bucket of money in the Yalfer budget right now to cover the worst case scenario. Whether that's where we end up or not, when I say worst case, I should say higher cost, highest cost, worst case. Whether we end up there or not, that's what this personnel may. And who's going to serve on that and how that's going to work. That's what the Yalfer. I will just share that one of the comments I heard was that, well. You know, when it comes right down to, let me just. Up there administrative staff. To share that feedback. Share that. It just wasn't material impact. Into looking at two or needs of, but I think the contribution rate was significantly different than what we did in Springsberry, correct? Our 401A contribution for, and this is what they're proposing.
The township's 401 that is offered to all non-uniformed officers is the defined contribution 401. Teamsters, it's nine and a half percent that the township, the employer puts in. All other employees is nine percent.
Nine.
So half, half a percent difference. And then the employee puts in 2%. And then anything else that the employee wants to invest. We have a separate plan, which is a 457 plan. And the employee can put a dollar, fixed dollar amount of percentage, whatever up to the maximum that the federal government allows. But the township doesn't put any money in that one, so that's a way for the employee to invest more if the employee chooses to invest. The cash balance plan, the way I understand it, the way I understand cash balance plans, they can be any. Any arrangement of a contribution by the employer, it doesn't have to be a certain number. But what the Yalfer's proposing is significantly higher than what we're offering. Your contribution, a lawyer contribution of nine and nine and a half percent.
And I think the numbers that we discussed last meeting, which were presently at 10 or so. Proposals to give 12, 12%, that would apply to all Italian chiefs and also parts of the two of each. The numbers we talked about for that change about seven grand.
And as I mentioned, I think in our last meeting. The command staff staying with the defined, or the cash balance plan would be similar to how our police department. So our police officers, if they move out of the union into a commanding position, a lieutenant or a chief. They stay in the defined benefit plan. The administrative staff within the police department are in the 401K plan with the township offices on hold.
Any other questions or discussions on that kind of the plan? So let's go back to the safer grant. So we've been told to call along, three years, 100% funded. Now I'm hearing that it's one year, and then you have to reapply for each additional year and you may not get it.
No, 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 it's still a three year, but the consultant who was there. It's the staffing stuff. He spoke, he said that safer grants that he's got, he's got 100% first year. The second year, the amount drops, and the third year, so it was less sequential. Wasn't 100% all three. I don't remember him saying what it drops, or Charles, I don't think he spoke that, it's just that it wasn't 100% three.
And so further discussion on that was, the safer grant application varies from your year, and some of yours it is 100%. And some of yours is not 100% for a period of time, just phase out. The gentleman from the consultancy secured 37 million dollars, I'd say, in safer grants for. City of Cincinnati's Fire Department to replace a whole cohort of older firefighters who were reaching retirement age. And so they used those monies over a period of time to bring in new staff. And I think that there was a phase out, but he still got so much to make that happen. But that was his experience at that time, which was not. And that's one of the challenges, we don't know what the guidelines are going to be 23, because they haven't published yet. We can look to what 21 was. Even then, it wasn't exactly clear, it was 100% or it was 15% from your phase out to some of year three. I couldn't really leave that out of my mind, so it varies from year to year, and so it could very well be because of. The volunteer crisis that we have here. Then it's probably they'll have 5%.
So if we get the grant. What does that timing look like? If we don't hire somebody until mid-year of '24. We can't roll that over into following years, then. If we use it or lose it.
That's correct, and that is a concern the chief expressed, if we get, hey, we get an award and it comes early in season, let's say May. Then, yeah, we're gonna have to hire, we're gonna have to hire in there to take advantage of that grant. Because you don't want to apply and get it, not use it. Conversely, it is possible that we may not get a award of a safer grant until, like, the fall. And that's kind of part of the challenge, is how you budget, yeah, how you budget. And as I think Don pointed out, I hope plain, painfully obvious, the budget mechanism that we have here is also contributing to the problem. Because you don't want to commit to hiring, you don't have a safer grant, you can't have a safer grant until you go into the next year, which you already set, like. Now, I would say that there was some flexibility on either side of that, but. That's to say, if we get safe grants, you come back, and we look to do it, hiring there, and a lot of businesses do that, that opportunity. We have, again, this is a, you know, the cost will be offset. Presumably, at least a dollar per dollar. Uh, or at the most, a dollar per dollar, maybe not over the whole three years, but we can make that decision at that time. I think we need to make that decision first, but I don't know if the budget mechanism allows.
But we decided that we could go back and revisit budget.
Within the limits, 100% of this. 25% over that. You can mix. If you can make some kind of calculation.
Yes. We have some mechanisms to make adjustments.
Budgets are approved in total, not by line, essentially. So if you need to be short one item, go over those with the total budget. And if push comes to shove, the Yalfer budgets, since I've been involved, have always had more left over in few years. Because there's. Out of budget change, I think there's about dollars there to fund exactly what you thought.
Alright, so where does that leave us? Time for the next one, yeah, public comment. We have anybody either in person or on Zoom that would like to make a comment on. Um, any of the budget presentation this evening? If you're on Zoom, please click the raise hand button so that you can be recognized. Anybody in the audience, uh, let me know if you'd like to test it. Alright, seeing none, uh, meeting is adjourned. Thank you everyone.